Okay, let's kick it off. Good evening. The council has some very weighty decisions to make this evening. And we'll start by calling our meeting to order. The first thing we're going to do in this special Fairfax Council meeting is to engage in a conversation with you and ourselves on the selection of the operator of management of our beloved farmer's market coming up in May. And to direct our town manager this evening to prepare and execute a contract. And with that, I'll turn to the manager and perhaps you'd like to lead us off.
Sure, it's a pretty brief staff report. As you know, this item was continued from your past meeting to this meeting. At the March 6 meeting, you actually heard presentations, asked questions of the proposers. Continue to this meeting. Subsequent to that time, we also gave additional questions from council members passing on to proposers. They actually provided a written response, and that's contained in the packet before you. So really, with that, all the proposers are here to answer questions, and that concludes the staff report.
With that in mind, you know, the council heard from everybody, but we did submit some additional questions. We received answers to those questions. Is it the council's pleasure to, again, ask the applicants to come up for further conversation at this time? Or do we want to go just right into our own deliberation?
I mean, yeah, I think maybe we should talk about it, deliberate, and then if anything comes up, we can get clarification or further information from the applicants.
And I must say, when you come up, let's try to keep you in the order we were in last time. For some of us, a really remarkably talented and can remember your faces and your names, to the rest of us, it was what you were wearing. Except for the guy. We can figure that out. All right, with that, let's have our conversation.
Thanks for coming again. That extra week, even though I spent it in Wyoming, was very fruitful. I talked to -- this is a really serious issue for our community, apparently. I had a number of citizens that I spoke to, far more than on many other issues that come to this council, which I thought was really interesting. This is hard. I mean, and I spoke to also a number of references where you each are holding markets. And every single person who is -- that I spoke to who's holding a market with you absolutely adores each and every one of you and thinks you're the greatest, which did not make our jobs any easier. And I think that it's, you know, I really appreciate -- a lot of those extra questions came from me, and I really appreciated the answers to those. I think for us, it kind of, it comes down to who's, who do we think is going to be the best fit for our community? And that's a tricky, that's a tricky answer to find. There are a lot of, there are so many different criteria that I've been certainly pondering in that process. And, you know, I'm still, you know, there's still parts of me that are wavering and saying, well, you know, we want somebody who's, you know, really gets who we are. We want somebody, and I think that's almost all of you. We want something that's unique and different. We want something that we know is going to be reliable. And that doesn't always all fit in the same person. So I'm actually, I'm interested in hearing from the other council members, and I'm interested in hearing public comment before I land on any answer for myself. But I do, I want you, everyone, to know that the people that you do markets for absolutely adore you and think you're the bee's knees. So thank you for all the hard work that you've already done and for making our jobs so hard to choose.
Same sentiment from me. I mean, all of you are doing such important work to bring the farm to the table. And so it's a really difficult choice. And you all bring a lot of really good qualities. There's slight shades of difference between the different proposals. And for me, just what kind of has directed me, more than anything else, really, is to try to sort of strike the balance between the sort of festival atmosphere that this local market has developed and the, really, the pocket of the vendors, the farmers. Because for me, both of those pieces are equally important. We're giving up public space, and it's not just, it's not just for the residents, it's actually to sort of bring the agricultural community into our community. And in order to sustain that, we've got to make a market that really cultivates the farmers, makes it worthwhile for the farmers and the vendors to be here and to continue to be here. And there's been some degree of turnover. We've lost some vendors over the years. I was certainly persuaded by one of the recommendations I got for community, agricultural community events. Was given a very strong recommendation by one of the current vendors. That made an impression on me. Another thing that has, that has made an impression on me about community agricultural is their eagerness and willingness to explore a year-round market to the extent that we can do it, so that it becomes a real market. Again, I mean, I would like to see the emphasis go away from sort of party festival towards real market. I think we need to strike a balance. I just got a call from another vendor today who has actually, who actually dropped out of the market, who basically said that was a real issue for him. And he was driving all the way up from the Central Valley. So, you know, I know that the vendors are really pushed, and it's difficult for them to make a go of it. So that, that has been sort of the framework that I've been analyzing my decision through, the prism that I've been analyzing my decision through. And, you know, I mean, I, at this point, I think the strongest application in that regard is from agricultural community events. I don't think the resale model that Jim is bringing, I don't think that's a good fit for us. I think it's a good fit for a smaller market like you've got in San Anselmo, but I don't think that's what people have come to expect. And I think, to some extent, we do want some continuity of our market. And, you know, I mean, I don't want to criticize any of the other market managers because you're all good. And for me, it really, it did come down to sort of what I felt was the strongest proponent for the vendors. And that's kind of where I landed.
I guess my only feeling is it's odd, you know, this comes up in an odd sort of way. And my, my central feeling was, unlike most of the things that we do in Fairfax as members of a council that govern is, to see how we can, you know, fix a problem. And here, we're merely shining up, you know, the jewel in the crown. So I'm persuaded greatly, of course, your long history with agriculture, and I think Larry's making some excellent points about the need for the vendors. I think we've been perhaps less attentive to that side of things. But, boy, you talk about an event that's been created in this town that none of us who were, you know, participating at that time to bring it to the downtown believes park could have ever imagined, that it would ever take on the sort of joy that it brings to this community. So to me, it's a sense of making sure that we do no harm to that. And when I'm evaluating the foreview, it's that sense of, boy, I don't want this coming off the rails. And now, it's just an opportunity to make sure, it's something that I think you're raising, Larry, very importantly, that perhaps we've been just a touch inattentive to the needs of the vendors and the farmers themselves. And that this is not some charming exercise. It is for us. But for them, it's their life, their finances. And I think the decision we make is going, and I think the way that we structure and move this festival into its new generation is going to be much more attentive to their needs and concerns as we, you know, we love kids in Fairfax, and we love the families coming out. But we're going to have to balance this, I think, a little more creatively. So with that, let's bring the conversation back. And Pam?
Let's go to the --
Let's go to the folks. Let's do it in the order we did last time, if we can. So whoever it was that got up last time, I believe --
It was Kelly.
Was it Kelly, who was wearing red?
It was blue.
Come on up, and let's have a short presentation. And I might also preface this by saying mindful of the fact that, as fascinating as the conversation is, we're kicking you out at close to 7:00 because we have a follow-up meeting. So thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate, you know, it's, it's tough to be in this competition because there are really great contenders. I agree that we all are very passionate about our farmer's market. And Fairfax does have a really beautiful market in a beautiful location. And the thing that I've heard over the past week is how cool it is to be under the redwoods, which, you know, it's great to hear that people are passionate about that as well, that they do love the park. You know, I've spoken to some of the prior musicians and vendors, and was hoping that some would come this evening, but it has been short notice. So maybe we'll get a few surprises, who knows? So, you know, we are really passionate about the vendors as the community that goes beyond our inner community in the farmer's market. The, you get relations with, you know, the customers and the merchants and, and the environment. So we'd like to maintain that and extend it and make it even better. We do have a strong farmer following. Our Marinwood Market is actually more than 50% farmers. So we'd like to bring that into Fairfax. I think that's what Fairfax would appreciate. Also showcasing, you know, the, what the community needs in regards to offering space for nonprofits, offering space for community elements, that, you know, bringing all those elements in. You know, there's not really much more I can, you know, expand on without, like, dragging it along. So if you, if any of the council members have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Can you talk a little bit about how you market, how you kind of advertise for your markets?
We're pretty grassroots. We don't spend a lot of money on advertising, so we tend to put our money into creating a profile or identity for each individual market and creating postcards that we can hand out, posters to put in windows to engage. So then we can go, I always call it like the old-fashioned politician, kiss the baby, shake the hand. So we like to enter the community with a smiling face, offer the poster, you know, engage in dialogue, let them know that we're a part of the community, we're not just coming. Because I know that sometimes when you bring a farmer's market into places, some people believe, you know, especially merchants, it can get a bit competitive, like, you're camping out in our community, taking our money and leave. You don't, you know, you don't pay taxes. There's all these, you know, ideas. And I think that we like to take that facade away and show that we're here to be a part of the community, just as they are. We also do Facebook. We create a Facebook identity for each individual market. We're, we're looking into Twitter. I'm still confused by Twitter, but I'm, I'm looking into it. And I do an individual newsletter for each farmer's market, so that's pretty much how we do it. Really try to spend as much time at the farmer's markets, meeting the customers, so, sure.
Oh, sorry. No, I was just going to ask, when, when are your other markets? In other words, what days of the week are you?
So we currently, we currently have four markets. Two are year-round, two seasonal. We run Paloma Eastside Farmer's Market is on Tuesday mornings, 10 to 1:30, and that's at Lucchese Park. Then we just start, we'll be starting this season with Nevada. That one, so Paloma's year-round, Nevada's seasonal, and that's a Tuesday evening. Then we also have Marinwood on Saturdays, that's a year-round, nine to one. And Glen Allen is also a seasonal market, which is, starts in May, goes through the end of October, 10 to 2 on Sundays.
Okay, so Wednesday, you've got Wednesday?
Wednesday's open, yeah. Yeah. So, and I'll have a, since we have Nevada, it's going to be a pretty long day for me. So I'll be able to sleep in, that'll be nice, and then come over when we can enter the park. And if there's any signage that needs to go up, we can do that.
Okay.
And we have the staffing, too. We actually have, I have a great assistant manager that helps me in Paloma, and he's, he's committed to do Wednesday with us. So that would be AJ, he's in our little profile area. And he's, he's spent, he's not helping me with Nevada because he spends all his time at Food Pantry in Paloma, and he's really committed to that. And so he spends his time giving out food to the people who are in line. So he's a pretty committed community, you know, member, really committed to people.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Sure, thank you.
You know, just, just on the issue of advertising, I just don't know what you would have to do. A sign goes up, couple of thousand people show up. I don't know if it's that much, or it's a couple of hundreds of people, but it's, it's pretty packed in.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's pretty successful just on its own motivation.
Right, but you can never be overzealous about your advertising. You never take a customer for granted. You have a whole group of people going down to Francis Street that are going out to West Marin or coming out of West Marin. They don't see the market, and it's not visible to them. So signage, that, that group is important, you know, as much as the people of the community. And it showcases Fairfax, you know, if people are coming for the farmer's market, they get to see that whole group of merchants that they may not have seen before on Broadway. So there is more. I think you can never have too many customers.
I defer to you. You're right. You are right. You are right. Okay. Getting up the Marin Community Farm stands?
Jim.
Jim, number two.
Just to address Councilman Bragman in regards to my, well, to quote, "you" resale model. And as, you know, described before, the more appropriate word would be aggregation, in that representing local farmers. And, you know, when we look at the CFM Certified Farmer's Market model in small towns, and even the creation for the CFM, why was that even created? And in that regard, my understanding is to create, you know, rules and regulations and to protect the consumer against what, you know, the producers that are coming out there need to provide what's called a Certified Producer Certificate. Now, this certificate does not dictate whether they're certified organic. It just gives a certification that they grow what they're presenting at market. And that is the full, one of my number-one understandings of the CFM is to prevent growers from buying from wholesalers and coming to, to market. Now, when you get into bigger cities, you have big, bigger CFMs, 100 vendors plus, regulating that is a challenge. And the, you know, there's, there's some farmer markets are under scrutiny, vendors are not pleased with some of the actions that are happening in there. All that being said, back to a town like Fairfax, which in my opinion, doesn't support a CFM model. And the previous organizations came forward, some of the best in the, in the industry, and they, they themselves didn't feel it sustainable. And you really want to ask yourself, and again, think real hard about this, and you talk about agriculture, whether any of my competitors can bring the face of Marin agriculture to their markets. Producers that have, Marin Organic Producers, one by one, started pulling out of Wednesday here in Fairfax. Dennis Dirks from Paradise Valley Produce, Russ Sartori, Venus Sartori Berries. And, you know, it is true, I do represent farmers. I, I think that, that does resonate with the town of Fairfax, because their values are local. And when you talk about produce coming from 200 miles away, I know it's California grown, there is a place for some producers that come from further away. I don't, no one in Marin grows peaches, and someone commented on that. So if you look in, in my proposal again, you'll see there's five regional organic producers. I identify them as regional and not local. And that's where I'm able to source citrus and peaches. And I'm, I'm able to represent in a handful, over 30 farmers, under as many tents as the market demand can meet. It could be the most amazing, beautiful, biggest spectacle of a farm stand the town has ever seen, with Marin Organic flags flying and faces on all the produce. And, you know, again, to sum it up, under the CFM model, that certified certificate that the CFM farmer's markets require producers to show, you know, I'm certified in a different component, and that's through the, my producer's certificates and their organic certifications, 100% organic. So if you want 100% organic market in a small town, you're going to, you can, you know, the aggregation model is something for consideration. If you want conventional produce mixed in with produce from a little further away and more of a festival, there's plenty of options for that. So I, I'll take any questions if anybody has.
Can you, can you sort of, are you able to provide a farm stand in another CFM? In other words, if...
And that's a very interesting question, and this is all about language. And I wrote in my response, you might, you know, whether we want to, if you do decide to go with Marin Community Farm Stands, and I spoke with the ag commissioner, Stacy Carlson, about this, and he said he would support this model. Essentially, in a CFM, part of the lead requirement of a CFM is to have a designated area where your certified products are sold, and what's not certified, and what's a food purveyor, and clear distinction between, that's one of the number-one guidelines and rules. So to jump through some language hoops, one could say, over here is where the certified producers come, though no choose to come, they choose to aggregate through the farm stand, and that can be set up over here. It's a play on words. I don't feel that the CFM, the ag commissioner, is the right language for what, what I do. There's no CFS yet, there's no Certified Farmer's Market, I mean, Farm Stand yet. And there's something called the Ad Hoc Commission, and they're, they're sitting and having discussions now for about a year. And I haven't really presented any of that information to you because it's, it was such a long bureaucratic document. But it's in the revitalization of the CFM program, because it's under scrutiny, because it's hard to regulate, and the state doesn't have the budget to regulate the CFM. And they want to incorporate more direct marketing concepts for farm stands and CSAs. This would fall, the CFM falls under direct marketing. That means know your farmer, and meet your farmer, and buy from your farmer. And that's a wonderful value. I totally embrace that. In towns where CFMs are sustainable, that's the model. But in a smaller town, with the good earth and all the ag that's going on here, I find it very hard to believe that we would be able to have 15 farmers come, you know, 20 farmers, and have them do well. I think that's a, it's just, it hasn't worked before. Marin Organic Produce has pulled out. And, you know, it's more of the same. And I represent change. And I know it's a very controversial piece, but I'm here, I'm ahead of my time, there's no legislation yet. I'm not sure what else I can, can do, but invite you to, to join, so.
Thanks a lot.
And I think you kind of hit the nail on the head for me. And part of my, I mean, part of me from my farmer's market experience is meeting the farmers, not the guy that's selling the farmers' stuff. And so I know that that, and I, and I, you know, I like your model. I think it's, I do, I think it is on the edge, and I think we may not be ready for it. I think we have a, we, you know, we have certain expectations to kind of uphold from what our community wants, and, and I, and that's kind of, that's sort of my concern with the stand model and the aggregation model.
Sure, sure.
Is that you, you lose, and you also, I think you, you lose that direct-to-consumer quality.
But it's not sustainable.
We don't know that. I don't think we, I don't think, I mean, I think that we, you know, I mean, I think that, my understanding is the reason that AIM pulled out, to some degree, is, has to do with, you know, their desire to be at bigger markets, and their, and to some degree, the overhead of their organization, you know, their organization, operational sort of cost.
Sure, sure.
That the market, you know, I think we have three other people here who would, who would argue with you that we can indeed, you know, make the, make that model work.
But would it be sustainable for the farmers, for the farmers?
That's what we need to find out. And I think that there need to be, you know, we need to make some changes, but I don't, I'm, I'm not quite ready to jump to the aggregated model.
You know, you mentioned the voice of the community, and I note today, there's at least three, if not four, people from our community that will come and speak and indicate that, that's, that's where their thoughts are. Okay.
Well, now that you've told us the three or four, more people are going to say it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Marin Community Farmers Market Association, Lynn.
This is Julian. I listened to what you've said, and I, I, even though the proposal requirements did not indicate that any changes should be made, I took the risk and started the thought, anyway, that maybe the festival model has gone a little bit too far, maybe. And that not canceling it out or anything, but allowing it to be and making subtle changes to, such as, the best idea I've heard so far is the 30-minute parking for the merchants, the downtown merchants, as well as, as for the farmers. I, I think the festival model does work okay for the food vendors, particularly the hot food vendors, but we don't want the market to be taken over by that. We, we still want to serve the farmers. So what I had proposed, besides the education programs, was advertising to get the, the right type of, and targeting the right type of customer, so that shopping occurs based on the market, not based on the festivities. Because without advertising, the, the sort of cheap way to get a customer is to offer entertainment. But they're just a body, they're, they're not necessarily purchasing. So this is why I have an advertising program. And I, I do feel that that helps the farmer's sales, especially if it's directed in, you know, such as Edible Magazine and the food sections of the newspapers, and there's a way to target that customer. Granted, you're a small town, but granted, your demographics are amazing for a farmer's market. You know, you're Berkeley West, or Bellinas East, or however you want to say it. You're the right demographic for a farmer's market. That's your, your biggest strength. And all we want to do is sort of find those people and drag them out of their homes. And of course, as Kelly said, you know, the West Marin contingent would be great as well. And I can't see that that wouldn't harm, that that would harm your merchants, that would only benefit them, because they, they actually have the same problem of, a small town may not be able to service these, these small merchants, as well as having some outside sales. So, and I know that every town was a train stop at one point or another, and the infrastructure is not built for any major events. But I think if you can focus on the people that are going to be in and out, not take up a lot of parking, do their shopping, as opposed to the all-day ones, that, that was my orientation. And then, of course, working with the community, joining the chamber, embracing the nonprofits, working with sustainable, Fairfax, all those are wonderful, and it does create a deeper bond between the market and, and other, other types of businesses and, and members of the community. And there, that's an endless process, and, and that keeps the communication lines open. It's just as important. And then, of course, we have Facebook. My daughter has placed us on Facebook, along with the website, and she's keeping up with that for us. And of course, the year-round idea, we prefer the, if, we did not give that impression, we prefer to operate a year-round market, because every season, you're basically dragging customers out of the, I hate to put it this way, but out of the grave. So you have to re-advertise and re- way, but out of the grave. So you have to re-advertise and re, you know, they're a dead customer to you potentially. You know, they may not come back. They may have found some other option, some year-round option and may not come back. So if you have that consistency and that flow of a year-round market, it, it actually is easier on the, I think, on the operator to, to keep that customer base loyal to those individual farmers. So yeah, I'm all for that. Okay.
With that, Pam, start with you.
Yeah, and I'm actually, I am interested, I'm, you're the, you're one person who's who kind of dedicated more, I think, less like musical guests and more education and cooking demos. At markets that you're currently operating, how often does that happen and what is, what are they?
Well, we generally aim for the once-a-month model, so.
That's how often that's happening.
And that, and that, that works the best because you need time to promote each time, you know, not that you can't have information, you know, also available.
Point, but you know, we have, there's a living wage ordinance and in Fairfax and I'm not sure what your hourly was for your assistant managers, but...
Is that too low?
It, it may be, it may be.
I was thinking of hiring a high school kid to help out or something like that.
Well, that may work, but it's just, it's just, it's just an issue that kind of popped out.
Sure, no problem. Just try to keep the expenses down for the farmers.
Understood, understood. No, I mean, I, you know, was amazed at some of the depth of your analysis.
Yeah, I thought you'd either think I was nuts or you'd appreciate.
Well, we may, we may both be.
The passion is there, however.
Absolutely, absolutely. No, I was very impressed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Garrett, I'm gonna throw this on you. You remind us of our 30-minute parking conversation we've had here. Clearly, I don't think it's too far-fetched that you're gonna have to figure this out. And how we do that with Fairfax volunteers, with the police department as well, and with the vendor that we ultimately select. So add that to your growing list of tasks.
Oh, I just want to add one thing. Hearing that Dennis Dirks had dropped out is, is the sign, you know, that's a sign, I'm sorry to say, that, that the festival model has gone too far. That's an organic, a local farmer. And I talked to the prior executive director that's before the current one at, at Ag Institute over the weekend and she said that Dennis, this was his best market at one point, sales-wise. So that's a concern. And that's, that's something I had already heard because a number of my producers are also here and I've been hearing it for years. So, and part of that is the nighttime model too, if it can be a little earlier. So don't want to take all your time. Thank you.
Next generation events.
Hello again. It's hard to go last because everything's pretty much been touched upon. The only thing I can add is that I adore this market. I think it's phenomenal and I just, I'm glad to see it's continuing. I grew up going to it mostly when it was in the parcade and then I bring my family weekly, so I, I could by memory give you where every vendor is. I have a lot of passion for it. And what else did I jot down? A couple of things I just wanted to throw out is the downtown businesses, just get them involved and get them to buy into this because even if it's just a couple per, per Wednesday, you get the buy-in and then all of a sudden it's their market too. And it's good for the city and it's good for them. It's bringing people to them. And we do little partnerings in San Rafael where we highlight a certain business. You get a card, you go back and you get 20% off. So it works for us, works for them. The last thing I wanted to touch on that Councilmember Bragman brought up was, I think our budget is really accurate when we talk about the managers being present and being, first year, this is my partner Shayla, sorry, she's just here tonight. First year, we plan on both being there every week just to get a grasp on things. Next year, we would knock it down to one. But our budget is higher on the payroll end, but we do, we're there. We're the first ones there, we're the last ones gone. And I had, I went to the San Rafael market three days after I had a baby. It's a little crazy, but I, I care and I don't want, I am kind of a control freak and I don't want it to get, something to go wrong. So just for your consideration, I think it's important that, you know, yes, it may look like we're, we only have one market, so is that good or bad? But on the flip side, we only have one, so we could invest a lot of time and a lot of energy into this. So that's it for my end.
You guys are not making it any easier. I guess, and I'm kind of, I, I'm not crazy about the San Rafael Thursday market, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
And I, and I, part of it is, and I think, the thing I do like about it is how the businesses are involved. But it's also, it seems to me like the businesses that are involved are the ones that are on that street. I know from working a lot with our downtown businesses that some of them, I know we have Fat Angel who will come, comes, you know, they do, they do a booth at our, at our farmer's market. But a lot of our businesses don't particularly love the farmer's market. They find that it draws, and I think part of it is because of the dinner market quality that has grown because a lot of our downtown businesses are restaurants. And I, and so I guess, I guess my question is, how do you maybe engage businesses that don't love the market? How do you, and how, you know, how would you sort of bring them in since they're not actually on the, on the street? I think asking our businesses to take more hour, you know, spend more hours, hire another person and schlep all your stuff to the park may or may not make the businesses feel good about it. So I'm just kind of curious of some of your thoughts on bringing that business community in when you don't actually have that business community right on this, you know, where the market is, right on the street, in the middle of the, in the middle of it.
Right. So for this year, we actually have started a Groupon-type model. We don't take 40%, we take nothing. So it's like, it's a way to incorporate local businesses. So for example, we have a woman who owns a Thai restaurant. It's been a rough year. She said she's just waiting for April to come so that life picks up downtown. You know, we set a, a number. If this many people buy into this, they come to your restaurant and they eat. So she's not participating in the market per se, but we're bringing people to her. So they don't have to come out and set up, you know, because it's a lot of work and it's a small show. It's, you know, the market's what, four hours? So it's a lot of work for them and the permitting. So that's just something we're doing downtown and see how it goes.
I gather there may be some members of the audience who would like to speak with time going so tight. If you would be, kill that mic. If somebody would be kind enough, you know, to come forward, everybody that wants to speak. And let's hold it to about a minute. Tell us who you support and why you think. They're terrific.
It's funny because I'm a local independent businessman. I'm a sound engineer, so I should know how to do that. I'm here to represent Jim and what he's been doing. And I'll tell you, I stopped going to the market here in Fairfax a couple of years ago when we found him because he finds the best produce that we can find from all the local market. You've heard this. That's why you're looking at me smiling. He, I, I don't need to meet the farmer. What I need is somebody who I can trust to get the best produce, local, organic. And he's shown me that consistently. So we drive right past this market. I don't, I don't want vendors from Fresno. I grew up by there. I want this, the local stuff that is absolutely the best quality I can find. And I also want business people that I can trust. When I take my car somewhere to be fixed, I, I don't know how to fix cars. So whatever they tell me needs to be fixed, I have to be able to trust them. And that's what I found in him with my food supply, which is much more important than my car. So that's, that's me advocating for him. So I'm gonna be fine either way, no matter who you choose, because I'm still gonna be going to him. So thank you very much for your time.
Hi, I guess I can pretty much echo what he said. I, I'm here to encourage you to, to choose the farm stand. For me, the-
I'm sorry, can we get, we, I didn't, we didn't, we need name and, and address if at all possible.
Oh, okay.
It's our common practice, sorry.
Sure, Cindy Darling, 339 Forest Avenue. So for me, the purpose of a farmer's market is to get local, organic food. It's not to meet my farmer. I think it's great if you have that opportunity, but my understanding is it's more expensive for the farmer to have to pay for somebody to come here or to, you know, take their own time to come here. They end up, they cost them more. They spend for gas. They're using greenhouse gases or emitting greenhouse gases. There's more pollution problem having more trucks. So for things that are of value to me, it's getting the food, low mileage of, of transport and having a less, the lesser impact. The festival's nice, but, or the festival atmosphere is nice, but maybe we could do something else and have it be separate from that. Thank you.
Tony Utis, 7 Forest Terrace, Fairfax. Okay, oh, my mic away there a little bit. The thing is, is I, I don't think the markets should be inclusively organic because you may limit your buying crowd. And I think it should be available for people to buy food that may not be organic, you know, but still, you'll be able to invite a group of people in that can purchase food, you know, at, at, at a price that's, you know, reasonable. And they can have a choice whether they want to use organic or non-organic, but the choice should be there. That's all I'm saying.
Hi, I'm Michelle Simonson. I live across the street and I love the Fairfax market with all my heart. And I'm so happy to hear that there's so many great options. And I'm here to represent Jim as well. And I'm with you, Pam. I love meeting the farmers. It's one of my favorite things. And I won't go to the San Rafael market because there's nothing that I can eat there. I mean, there's like one thing with organic strawberries and I am passionate about organic food and to me, that really matters. And I think, and I'm, I'm so happy with the quality of his food. Every time I've, I discovered, I've gone to a couple of the different ones, the one in Canton, the one in Santa Anselmo. And I, he's always so professional and even though he's not the actual farmer, you ask him questions and I do, I grill him about everyone. And how is this grown and where is this and how, you know? And he, he always knows the answers to it and seems, you know, really professional and friendly. I think he'd draw in a good crowd and so, but I mean, the other proposals sound great too and so, but I just wanted to put in my two cents worth it. I think he's pretty awesome.
Chris Lang, Canyon Road, Fairfax. The reason I'm making a comment now is because back in 1990-something and the Chamber of Commerce brought the farmer's market to town, we would put it in the parcade. And I remember the Good Earth across the street was pretty upset because there was parking issues. And the complaints kept coming up about parking, and parking, and parking. So finally, it moved over to the park here called Fairfax Park. And the farmer's market was dealing directly with the town Fairfax at that time. And as I recall, there was some, a lot of talk about fees because to use that park one day a week, it's worth at least 120 bucks to the town. And that's the normal fee for using the park for a nonprofit, for something like that. And I know that people really enjoy the farmer's market now as it's currently configured, but I do think that we should be, get reimbursed something for the wear and tear on the park, even though it is a wonderful festival atmosphere. Used to be, the only time people got together like that was a Fairfax Festival once a year. Now they do it once a week and people really like it and it's good. We should do everything we can to keep it going. But I'm also concerned about the restaurants that shut up shop in there. If they're taking away business from our local restaurants, it's just kind of a thought, that there's food vendors in there that aren't really farmers or selling vegetables or anything. It's one thing to sell a specialty product from a farm like honey or something like that. But when they're actually selling hot meals at the, at the festival, it's, it's a little funny for me, but just wanted to give you my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Genevieve LeGoff. I'm a local business. I'm an acupuncturist at Eight Bullinas Road between Heaven and Earth. And I'm here to speak in favor of Jim. I've, before I was an acupuncturist and also concurrently, I ran the community-supported agriculture program for Marin Organic Farms for 10 years, since 2002. It started as a joint venture with Jim's Farm Stand and then, you know, we sort of split up and did it semi-separately. But both those ventures were started by a founding member of Marin Organic, Diane Matthew of Mount Barnaby Farm. And the reason for that was that it was, it's very difficult for farmers to get to markets, not only because of fossil fuel issue, but also time issues, the cost of labor. I've worked very closely with over 20 Marin Organic farmers over, since 2002. And all of them say the same thing, you know, to pay minimal wage in Marin, send some guy to come to the market on top of doing harvest, everything is just not practical. And I know in Dennis Dirks' case, that was definitely the case for the farmer's market, even though it was lucrative for him, he just couldn't pull it off in logistic ways. So what I want to speak of mostly is food safety. You know, we face a really critical time in the history of the world. We have genetically modified organisms. There is no safety as to the source of seeds. And now more than ever, it becomes really important to know the source of your seed. Marin Organic embodies beyond organic standards where the farmers are really striving to do more than just the organic certification that the state requires. They're really sourcing their seeds from safe places and keeping track of the genome. And, you know, sometimes they can trace back several generations back where their charred seed came from. So for example, you know, Peter Worsley will know that his red chart was selected from Peter Martinelli's-
Wait, 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 wait. We could talk about this and would love to talk about this at great length. Unfortunately, we just-
Sorry. Okay, I feel, sorry. So I'll just wrap it up. I just think that we have an opportunity to, to really choose something that can make a difference in the world. And that's good. And then just really briefly, because I am a local business, the 30-minute parking thing is great for the market, but for people like me who have patience that need to stay longer than 30 minutes, there'd have to be some kind of system worked out. Sorry, I was carried away.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and, and bring it back to council. And I want to thank all of the applicants, not only for the quality of your presentation, the generosity of your time coming to visit with us twice, but also for making this decision remarkably difficult. And with that, let's open up the conversation. Garrett, I would suggest to you, you're gonna get on the phone and tell John we're doing a 7:15. Okay?
This is so hard. And I, it's, and I, Jim and all of your fans, I really appreciate you drawing the people out. I, that very often is the thing that moves me. If I hadn't received about a dozen phone calls supporting other people as well throughout the week, I may have, I may have been swayed. I'm gonna, I, you know, I think that the right way to go is with Kelly and the Agricultural Community Events Farmer's Markets. I think that she meets our needs. I think that based on the kind of markets that she runs are the kind of market that we want Fairfax to be. And I, and I, it's, that's a, it's a really hard choice. There's so much experience and so much opportunity here. So I'm gonna move that we go with the Agricultural Community Events Farmer's Markets.
I agree. It's a tough decision. And, you know, the gradations between the, the applicants, you know, it's, they're, it's really, it's qualitative and it's very, makes it very, very difficult. But I, I really feel we want someone who is very oriented and familiar with the current vendor set that we have. I do think that the town, from what I can glean from the popularity of, of the event, that having a little bit of continuity is a good thing. And having a little bit of change can be a good thing too. And I think we do need some change in how this market is run if we want a sustainable market and really want it to be the change that it needs to be as far as really expanding the agricultural opportunities for the farmer and for our residents. So fortunately and unfortunately, we have to make the decision, the call. And I, I would second Pam's- second Pam's motion at this time.
Okay. With that, I, I think we have a unanimous decision. I thank you all very, very much, and-
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's take a break. Let's take a little few seconds off here.
Don't worry, we love each other.
Good.
Smiling. Okay, let's, let's-
It's totally okay. I'm happy to come.
Okay, let's, we gotta have a little quiet in here. Little qu- Michelle, usher them out of the room. The new deputy clerk position requires you to usher the chatting people. Okay, let's move on. A little quiet, a little quiet in the room. Peter, cut off the conversation. Okay? All right, we have a consent calendar with two items on it. Do we have council discussion on, Larry?
Just, I just wanted to mention on the parking-
Yes.
...issue, what I think we can do, what we do for the Fairfax Festival, is we do, we do a street closure and parking resolution, and I think we, that's how we could handle the market. So we would do a street parking, we would do a special parking resolution, which would set up a special 30-minute zone just along the perimeter of Bolinas Park, and I think it would be very simple to do that.
Excellent.
And I just wanted to say on the consent calendar, I wanted to thank staff for, I think prompting Coastland to give us the letter of apology. I, I appreciate that statement, and I appreciate-
An inch went a mile.
Yeah, that's right. And I, I really do appreciate you following up on that, because I really didn't want to pay any extra fees for that, for, for that project, so I just want to say thank you, and I would move approval.
Any, any public comment on the consent calendar, on the two items? The two items of the consent calendar? No? Yes? Chris? Chris Lang?
Honorable Town Council staff and fellow citizens, Chris Lang. This project, the Bike Spine project, John Reed's project, it looks to me like this Coastland consulting, we're going to pay them $27,000 to oversee what looks like something that staff could do, to me, and it seems to me that the 90-some-one thousand and the 20-some-one thousand make the project over budget. My understanding was the project was supposed to be $100,000, maybe 110, but it looks to me like that's more money than Transportation Authority of Marin allocated for the project. So I'm very concerned about this consultant and this oversight by this firm from Santa Rosa, and it's got nothing to do with their previous work or anything like that, it's this one project, it just seems to me to be too much money for them for too small a project. Thank you.
Well, before I turn that over to the manager, let me just point out, without being facetious in any way whatsoever, when you say this is something that staff can oversee, what many folks in the town might not realize is that the town of Fairfax during the ongoing Great Recession has contracted its contract, made smaller, its staff over time. And so to hear this should be overseen by staff, I gotta tell you, we don't have staff. We are, people are doing things out of their accustomed range of, of job specs, we are gap-filling as we can. Back in the days of yore, even when we weren't, you know, eating high on the, on the hog, as it were, we had much more staff around here, but one of the things that your council has done, and what your staff has done over the, over the last five years of the recession, is to actually make it, folks don't realize how many positions we haven't filled, how few members actually work for the town, how many, few staff members we have in the town of Fairfax. So it's, it's sort of a conversation that we've never really had with you, except during the budget season, and, you know, it's not generally well-attended. But we try to have the conversation with folks and tell them, you know, where we are in time and space, and so, in a way, I thank you for the opportunity to sort of use this moment to explain to folks about how we have managed the very generous tax dollars that we receive, but those tax dollars have not expanded, mostly because of property tax, revenues have not expanded, as we know, over time, even though we're beginning to see a little bit of a bump as the result of the generous increase in the sales tax and the business community doing a little bit better. So with all of that said, let me ask the manager for his comments on the, on the, on the Bike Spine and Coastland's work here. But Chris, go ahead.
Thank you. You know, Councilman Winesoff, I understand the contraction of town staff over the years, but I am still completely clear in my mind that we have enough person power and intellectual power to oversee a project this small. Despite everything you said, I believe that the staff we had are completely able to oversee this very small project without spending $27,000 for an outside consultant to oversee it. Thank you.
And we'll ask the manager for his thoughts.
So I, I think you accurately represented how we're at. Right now, we have one staff person, who's the building official, acts as the public works manager. Because we did look at trying to do this in-house, and the issue would be that if the building official spends his time on this, there will be plan checks and building inspections that would be delayed. We also would have to spend a little bit money on having our, right now, we have contractual public works director, he would have to be involved. Actually, there's a lot of paperwork to be done, that's something, you know, that, that we took a look at. So conceptually, could staff do it? Yes, but what would happen is service delays and other issues, and overtime and other things you would have to put into the hopper to take a look at, might actually get you pretty close to what that amount is, so we thought it was just a better use, to use Coastland for this. As we move forward in the future, we will look at better ways of trying to do something, but difficulty is you really have one person who's qualified, and that person is right now feeling two positions that before you had two people, so that, that's the difficulty right now.
I just mentioned one thing. You know, where this generated from was a couple fiscal years ago, when I was on TAM, we got this grant from TAM to do the project. And my understanding is that we will get reimbursed from TAM to, to do the project. So I understand what you're saying, but, you know, we don't have a public works director, we don't have an engineer on staff, we are going to get reimbursed for this, so as to our budget, I think it's going to be budget-neutral. But I think what you're pointing out is important for us as we go forward, which is, you know, maybe it's time for us to think about hiring or somehow budgeting for a public works director, which we have been striving for, for the last few years. So the point's well-taken, I think financially, we're neutral on this project. Thanks.
That, my only point was that we don't have an engineer on staff, and, and some amounts of this project require that.
Tony?
Seven Forest Terrace, Fairfax. This is about Pacheco. I was just wondering the completion on it. Is the other side of the street from, I guess, Good Earth, there, is that going to get sidewalked? No? Okay, is there isn't, reason why?
There's insufficient right-of-way, and that's, originally, that, that was another grant I got from TAM, and it was originally planned to go on the east side, but there's, we didn't have enough right-of-way, so that's why it got switched over. The original plan was to go on that side, so-
Okay.
Yeah, just, thanks.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Second?
Unanimous. With that, let's adjourn for about three minutes, see if we can get our mayor on the phone, and then go right into our seven o'clock. Make it a five-minute break. Okay, let's call the seven o'clock to order everybody pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For some, my tuchus for some. Okay, a couple of housekeeping matters, as you can tell, Mayor Reed is, is going to be participating by teleconference, and on that matter, it's never a, a happy moment, but I, I do want to bring to everyone's attention that we've had two very sad passing away. Both John's mom, Nancy Campbell-Reed, and also Ryan is here, O'Neill in the back, and his dad, Robert Louis O'Neill, also passed away over the last couple of days. And so we will be closing the meeting very solemnly in memory of, of them, and also our thoughts go out both to John and Ryan at this time. Can I have an approval of the agenda and the affidavit of posting?
Second?
Okay, are we all good on that?
Yeah, actually, the mayor's available by-
As we mentioned, the mayor will be available by phone from St. Petersburg, Florida, and the address where he is located at this time is clearly printed, as the roll call indicates, his address of 4801 Osprey Drive South, apartment 103 in St. Petersburg. At this time, we will have the open time for public expression, the three-minute time period, keeping in mind that, of course, you can speak on anything but that which is on the agenda. Susan.
Good evening, Susan Adams, I live at 47 Tamil Pious Road, Fairfax. I'd like to speak in support of the candidacy of Barbara Kohler to fill the vacancy of Ryan O'Neill. It is not on the agenda exactly, but I wasn't sure if there's going to be a time for people to speak in favor of candidacies, it sounds like there's going to be an adjustment of process.
Yeah, that's a really good question. Garrett, an attorney, where are we on this, on her request to speak about that? Is it on the agenda officially, and so that would nix that, or is this a time for folks to weigh in here? I think that she's correct, that she can speak, just reading the plain language.
It, it's not really on the agenda for tonight, the, the specific candidacies, it's a discussion more of the process.
Exactly. Susan?
Thank you, and I'm just not sure when it will be scheduled that I'll be available, so I'd like to make this point now. Thank you. So as I said, I'm here to speak in favor of Barbara Kohler to fill the candidacy of the, the position of Ryan O'Neill through the remainder of his term. As you are well-aware, Ms. Kohler has provided and continues to provide significant contributions and commitment to this town through her public service of seven years as a member of the Open Space Committee, as well as her continuing and current simultaneous service on the Planning Commission. I know Barbara both personally and professionally. I know her personally as another member of the Open Space Committee, which I also serve on. She is diligent, thoughtful, thoughtful of others' opinions, and genuinely looks for ways to help everyone participate meaningful in the process. I think that's a very important quality in, in deliberation. I also know Barbara professionally, at the agency where we work together, she is organized and efficient, she becomes knowledgeable of any of the issues that are put before her, under her responsibility, and she is firm. She is well-respected by her fellow managers and staff, because she accomplishes what she sets her mind to, she's committed, and she's considerate of other staff, and it's, it's, it's the mutual respect is well shown. In both circumstances, it is a pleasure to work with her. I believe her qualities and her experience and knowledge of town matters will serve this council well in filling a vacancy. As a town council member, she will provide ready knowledge of the town issues and concerns, her leadership experience, her considered decision-making, and her consideration of others. Thank you.
Garrett, can I ask, is John, I see he's sitting there, he lost a little weight, but he looks, he looks good. John, can you hear us?
Hello, I, I am, the phone- Are, are you asking me questions?
John, just wanted to make sure that you're able to participate, I just wanted to do a sound check on, to be-
Yes, well, this, in terms of a sound check, the, the telephone, the audio of the telephone connection here is not very good, but I am actually able to watch it, but the internet, too, is about a four or five-second delay, so if you give me that space of four or five seconds, I, I think I can understand what's going on.
Well, with all those old people in Florida, actually, the whole state runs four or five seconds. All right.
Yeah, it's Florida time, it's pretty good.
Valerie, please.
Hi, Valerie Hood, 79 Dominga. Hi, John, good to hear your voice. I just wanted to announce our movie series Friday, March 22nd, Friday at 7 o'clock, doors open at 6:30, it'll be here. Rise of the Machines and Attack of the Drones, with guest speakers Larry Bragman and Ford Green, and maybe somebody from Code Pink, I'm still working on that. Secondly, I was hoping that maybe when we do have our, our council meeting about the new council member, potential people, if we could put something on the big sign downtown, because it's hardly used, I think there are a lot of people that would really care about that, that don't visit the town website. I think you might get a lot of people, and I would say do well in advance, you know, because this is of a lot of importance to people, I mean, it will affect all of our lives, and, and that's it, thanks.
It's a good suggestion. You're, you're thinking the sign in the park?
Yeah.
Okay.
Green Park, or whatever that's called.
Tony?
Seven Forest Terrace, Fairfax, once again. This regards to the gas station up there, I know that last meeting, we talked about doing a survey on the traffic up there and studying it, and I just wonder if there's any play in a survey or a study around cleaning up the taxi, toxic, toxicity in the soils that are underneath there, and if there's been any, like, look into it or study or progression around trying to resolve that.
Barbara Kohler probably knows more about this than I do, but there was a remediation effort done, there was machinery there for a long time, and it's a good question, I'm not sure what the final outcome of that was, I don't know what the plans, if any, to prevent further contamination are, and I think those are all valid issues that need to be considered in the planning process, so good questions, I don't have the direct answers right now.
What brought this up was, is that there was a utility company doing some work on St. Francis Drake there, and they had opened up some holes close to that area, and there was groundwater seeping in there-
Yeah.
-and it smelled very flammable, so-
You know, you know what we could probably do, is that in the manager's report in, for the April meeting, an opportunity would arise for Garrett to poke around with DTSC and find out where this is in time and space.
Will there be any reports available for the public to view?
There are, if any reports have been generated that we're able to get our hands on, that we use in our review of that moment, yes, but I bet you there's a website at DTSC that identifies this, but let us take the laboring ore here, and see what we can dig up and, and bring to you and, and the community.
Thank you.
Barbara?
Yeah, I just want to mention that the gas station is not a DTSC project. The project that is under DTSC purview is the, right, and, so what I understand, I had one of my inspectors out here from the, the Air District to check out, they had a soil vapor extraction system that was taking out some of the contaminated vapors, but that project must be under a local- But that project must be under a local agency. And I guess my hackles go up, having cleaned up many hazardous waysites, to hear that there's groundwater seeping in and a bad smell, which would tell me that there may be product that's going into groundwater. So I would suggest, we need to find out what agency it is in charge.
Because this is not an agendized item, and I'm seeing our town attorney beginning to turn beet red. Why don't we task this off to the manager and get back to us in April? Good. Okay. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close this and move on to, number one, the discussion and consideration of the options to fill the vacancy caused by the resignation of council member Ryan O'Neil. You want to take this, Garrett?
Sure. Before I start the staff report, I thought it'd be important just to note to the public that originally, this was the night that we were scheduling interviews for council candidates. However, the mayor had a family emergency, is unable to attend in person. He is attending by phone. But we thought it'd be prudent to make sure all the council members were here in person to hear the interviews. So that's why we're rescheduling. At this point, it is rescheduled to March 23rd. However, that's a discussion item for the next item to talk about if that date works for the council. So moving forward into this staff report, as you know, back in February 6th, council member O'Neil resigned effective February 7th. At the sixth meeting, council determined that it would like to fill the position, appoint the position to fill the remainder of the term going to November 2015. Since that time, we did more research and have found that there is another option for the council to consider, and we thought it'd be important for you to hear that this evening, is that there is an option for the council to actually appoint someone for the position. And then that person then would run for election. Well, if they're interested, they would run for, the seat would be up for election in the regular election in November. If that's something that the council is interested in, then what we need to do is we would need to, council would need to actually approve ordinance. You'd have a first reading of an ordinance, you'd have a second reading of the ordinance. And that's just an option out there that we wanted you to take a look at. So really, not to make it too long, is really, so you have really two options. One is, you could proceed on your original path, which was to appoint the position and fill the remainder of the term, which would then be November 2015. Or if you prefer, you could direct staff to share with you kind of the steps related to, if you wanted to fill the position, but then have that seat up for election with the regular election in 2013, you also have that option. Now, that would be a two-year term, and that would be at the same time that the other four-year terms that are expiring, that would all be on the same election cycle. And so really, it's kind of a discussion, a little more direction. You still have the option available. If you did not fill the seat, then because of the timing, the special election would occur during the regular election. So it's all a matter of just the timing of when things happen, happens to be at the regular election. But one I have to note, if you do do this ordinance, then obviously, any future vacancies would be subject to the ordinance.
Let me ask, John, do you have any questions of the manager?
I do not. I, as I understand it, we're going along on this path that we set out a couple of months ago. I guess my only concern would be, I guess we need a first reading and a second reading, two paths in ordinance before the 60 days are up. And that's coming up relatively soon.
Yes, and the way that this would work, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that if we did go down the ordinance route, we would do the ordinance most likely on the 23rd, if we use that date. And then at our regularly scheduled April meeting, we would then adopt it. And the elections code provides a little more elasticity to the adoption of these quickened ordinances than the usual rather protracted timeframe for normal types of ordinances that we adopt.
Yeah, I see. So it's physically doable. I guess the question is then, the candidates have been, you know, seeing this as a two-and-a-half-year term or a close to three-year term. That might change some of their views, but I suppose they could always withdraw if that was the case, if we decided to go that way.
You're exactly right. It does change the equation a bit. I couldn't speculate on how they feel about it. It's really a question of whether the town wants to change its processes and procedures with regard to this right now. So I might turn to fellow council members and ask you a few thoughts on this at this time. Valerie?
My feeling is with Ryan's term, that because there's so much of it left, there's more than 50% of it left. And that kind of persuades me that the appointment should be subject to the special two-year election term. I don't, if the vacancy is less than half the remaining term, I could see making an appointment. But my feeling is, it's three-quarters of the term. That's, you know, that's a long time for somebody to step in as an appointed official to an elective office, in my opinion. And I'm not sure it really is fair to the voters to do that. So, you know, just from an analytical point of view, from my point of view, it makes more sense to make this appointment, an appointment subject to a special election for the two-year term in November. That being said, means there's going to be four seats in play in November. So that could be a very interesting spectacle. And I hope it isn't. I think, you know, Fairfax, to me, is, can be a model of local democracy. And it's certainly going to be a test of whether we are or not, if we go that way. The other thing that occurs to me, now I've lost my point, but, and hopefully it'll come back to me. I'll just say, to put, to set up the discussion, is that it seems to me that with over half the term remaining, we need to think about setting it up for a special election in November to finish out the term. And that's kind of where I'm starting with my thought processes on it.
I'm definitely also concerned about the potential of having four brand-new council members on our council at one time. That sounds like a lot of change. Although, I get your point. It is a long, there is a long term remaining. And that's a seat that we have all had to run for. And part of me says, make them run. I guess one of my clarifying questions is, how is it designated on the ballot? Like, is the person, would the person who comes in fourth place then be the person who gets the two-year term? Or is there a separate space on the ballot that says?
There would be a separate designation on the ballot for the office that is a two-year term. So people would file for that two-year office.
Would they also file for the four-year office?
They'd file for one or the other.
Different in the famous year of the woman so many years ago, when Barbara Boxer, I believe it was, ran for two-year or shortened term, and then had to run shortly thereafter for a longer term. Memory escapes me on this. I'm with Larry on this. I do think that we should go with the appointment for the shorter period of time and then bring it back. I realize that this will create a ballot, potentially a little ballot chaos. But I think it's so different that, as we all go door-to-door, we will be having the opportunity to explain that to voters. And I might suggest that, among the many motivations of getting prospective council members or incumbents out there to meet the public, is to actually explain what will become a little more confusing scenario than usual. I guess part of me also can't avoid the opportunity to poke a little fun at my old colleague, Ryan O'Neil, and suggest that for the next month and a half, you wake up every morning with the same headache you're giving us. Is there further conversation that we wish to have? Is there further advice or counsel that our town attorney for the evening would like to share with us?
Nothing else to share, although, maybe I missed it, but it wasn't clear to me what direction the mayor wanted to give. Right now, I see that you've got two people who are in favor of the election and one who I think is not. So it's not clear what direction you're giving to staff.
At the point, we almost forgot that we had our mayor on the phone. John, can you weigh in for us here?
Okay, thanks for carrying with the delay here. I would like to weigh in. I think it's very important, part of the process, to debate the issues, you know, and that's what an election process gives you, that everybody is running for that. So I also think that's quite valuable. There is one thing I would like to clarify, and I'm sorry, but my audio connection didn't allow me to hear it. But does this mean that one of, people would either elect to be running for the two-year term or four-year term?
Precisely so. As our, for the evening, town attorney, who is an election expert, and we're fortunate to have him subbing in for Jim Carpiac this evening, informs us, and as does the manager's memorandum, I believe, you make a decision. You run for the two-year seat, or there will be three, four-year seats, and one would choose which one to seek. So the answer to your question is yes.
Okay, well, that'll make it even more interesting. I, since that term is really for three-quarters of the term, I think that I would also agree that it's a good idea to have the somewhat complicated or complex election structure as the member of having four people running for a combination of terms.
Well, it's not all that difficult after, having just picked a one out of four spectacularly qualified folks to run a farmer's market, this actually seems more pleasant by comparison. Is there any further conversation that, yes, ma'am?
I guess, this concerns me that, I mean, my guess is that most people who are running are going to want to run for a four-year term on account of, and maybe you've seen this in experience of elections. My concern is that there is far less competition in somebody running for, I guess, in the pool of people who are going to be running for a two-year term than the four-year term. And that may potentially give somebody who has, you know, who would not be competitive in the four-year thing, an opportunity to get on our council. And I guess I'm curious to know if there's past experience around, I don't know how you would qualify that, but I guess that's the concern that comes to my mind, is that, you know, we have sort of our, you know, our regular pool of people who would run, run for the four-year term, and then a couple, maybe, you know, maybe the wild cards are more likely to run for a two-year, thinking that their chances are better to get a two-year. And that's where my concern lies.
And so political consultants are born.
You know, I think.
Well, I would like to clarify. Is it a question of California law that we couldn't, that we have to go this way? I mean, could we, in fact, say the first three finishers are four-year terms, and then the fourth finisher is a two-year term? I mean, that would make sense from my perspective.
We've asked our town attorney, Mr. Clark.
That's something we would have to take a look at. And we could give you the answer to that if you decided you'd want to go forward with the ordinance at the same time that you consider the ordinance. I'm not aware of a means to do that, but I would want to check that before telling you you can't do it.
It is, in a sense, reminds me of ranked voting, in an odd sort of, so yes, I think that we would like you to look into that.
Yeah, and I was just going to say, I assume that's how it would have, that's how it would be run. So the top four would get in, and they would be ranked, and the fourth would get the shorter term. But, you know, separating them out and having one two-year term, three, four-year terms, to me, does kind of raise some issues as to whether you'd get a pretty small pool of people running for the two-year term. I mean, I don't know. It's kind of a question of political strategy, personal, you know, energy. Because obviously, if someone would get elected for the two-year term, well, they'd probably be in pretty good shape for the next election. So, you know, but it is a little bit of a different configuration than I had actually considered coming into this. So, you know, I'm a little malleable, I guess, is where, right now. I mean, theoretically, philosophically, it seems to me, it's just, appointing somebody to fill three out of four years of an elective office raises some questions for me, especially, you know, the philosophy that we've been trying to develop of, you know, really close and clear local elections and local democracy. It just seems, it takes a little bit of hubris to make a three-year appointment on a four-year term.
So let me ask you a question. With that in mind, council and town manager, it seems to me as if you have two parallel tasks. One, you have to do your research. But at the same time, if we're going with what I sense is that direction, you also have to prepare an ordinance for us, for our consideration, okay? Because council may come back and say, yeah, I've researched it, no, we can't do it. But then we would go to the alternative, the controlled chaos alternative, if you will. Okay, with that, if it's council, we'll take, I suspect there may be one or two points of local comment that folks might want to make, so please come up and share your thoughts with us. Chris?
Thank you, Michael. Crystaline Canyon Road. You know, it seems kind of odd to have a special two-year term on the ballot. So when I worked with the Green Party, we worked with a system called instant runoff. And that was a way to make more sense out of electoral chaos. And it would seem appropriate to me that the three, four-year terms and the one two-year term are on the ballot, and the four top vote-getters fill those four slots. That would make it simpler in my mind. Seems having a special two-year slot with only some people qualifying for that and other people applying for the four-year doesn't sit right with me. I think that the idea of instant runoff, and I don't know, we call it social democracy, what you call it, but to me, it's what we studied in the Green Party, and it means that the fourth highest vote getter gets the two-year term. That's my suggestion.
Can I ask you a question?
Please.
I'd like to know your thoughts on whether, if we went to this approach, whether, were you sitting here, you would appoint perhaps former council members or folks who specifically said publicly that they would not run? In other words, we have many elders in the community that could sit up here and do the work. And in a sense, have the council not appoint somebody who would then be the, in a sense, the incumbent?
I understand your concern, councilman, and I agree with it because it did seem, I understood your point, that it gave a person sort of an unfair advantage in the election to be already on the town council, appointed. And so the idea of having a person appointed to the town council who will not run in the fall, in November, seems to be a pretty good idea from my viewpoint. Because it did feel like it would give one candidate, and we have eight, right, a leg up in the election. And that becomes political. And it would be best to keep this whole process apolitical, in a sense, you know, philosophically speaking. Plus, we want to avoid cronyism. Avoid cronyism at all costs.
I think it's an inherently political process. Got to say that.
Okay. Michael McIntosh. I want to compliment, sorry, Pam, but David and Larry, because how I saw this from the outside was, many times when we appoint somebody, we appoint not because it's our friend, but because they're like-minded thinking, because we have the same understanding, and we think, oh, this is our collective direction. So to me, this is very encouraging when I heard first Larry say something, to the point where I almost thought like, hmm, sit down? Because I disagree with you so many times, that may I want to shut up and not say something.
Is that possible?
I'm working on it. But I would very much like to see an election, and I think that how you could make this easier, because there could be a time when this occurs in the future when we're at two instead of three. So if the ordinance said that when there's somebody... So if the ordinance said that when there's somebody that has vacated position, and there's 50 percent or more, that person will come in at the next election, that the lesser voted person will then be the, either in this case, the fourth or the third, and that person will have the short term.
I'll tell you exactly how it happened the last time it occurred, a mere 21 years ago, when Judy reminded us, when council member David Clark stepped down from the council, the council went out, and Frank was here, he may remember, went and asked former council member Ken Lippie to step in for the balance of that short period of time. So it is, if you want to think of precedent in Fairfax, albeit 20-odd years ago, that did occur.
Right, but if you made the ordinance that you're speaking about, that whenever this happens, that they would participate in next election, and just the person with the lesser vote, that way you'd cover yourself if this ever happens again when we have a two or a three, and it would work, and for myself, I would really encourage that. I would like to see that. Thank you.
Susan?
Susan Adams, 47, Tamil Pious Road, Fairfax. I have a clarifying question. At the beginning, there was a discussion about the staff report and what the ordinance might look like, and I was wondering if it would be an ordinance that in every vacancy, there would be a special election, or would it be a certain period of time, as council member Bragman is mentioning, there's a concern about 50 percent having been served or not having been served, or is that part of the deliberations, it'll be put into the discussion of what the scope of the ordinance will be?
Council.
Under the government code, if you decided to go the route that you're talking about with the ordinance, then it would apply to all city council vacancies going forward. There wouldn't be a distinction based on the amount of the term that is left.
Future councils have to, would we have the elasticity to determine whether to trigger, or would we be in the, you're covered by the ordinance?
You're covered by the ordinance.
So what the ordinance would do, if somebody stepped down midterm, it would go to the next regularly scheduled council election?
It would set up the process where the council would appoint somebody interim until the next regular election date, that is more than 114 days after the call of the election, and then you'd have an election at that point.
Okay, I'm just saying, I don't want us to get committed to calling a special election. I mean, the beauty of it right now is we've got a regular election in November, anyway. So it just seems to me, what the ordinance should really be focusing on, and I'll shut up in a second here, is that if we can't distinguish between the amount of term served, that the appointment would be until the next regularly scheduled election, so that the town doesn't incur the cost of a special election.
It would be possible, on a future vacancy, that you would have to call an election other than at the regular election date, and would incur the cost of that special election.
When we say regular election date, it's not the off-year, it's our two-year. When we say regular, it means every, our two-year schedule, not last year or-
This one just happens to fall on the November date.
Right.
If the vacancy had happened at a different time, you could have been in a position where the election would have to be called earlier in the year. Because of the way the dates fall, it's just a happy coincidence that it ends up being in November. So in the future, it is possible, depending on when the vacancy occurs, that the election you're required to call would not be on your November election date, that it would be earlier in the year, and you would have to actually call a special election.
Even if it's by ordinance?
Right.
That puts us, or somebody in the future, you're not going anywhere, it would create a different set of chaos.
Well, it would cause us to incur the cost-
The $50,000 of the special election.
Correct. Yeah, the focus of, excuse me, of the government code is getting the election called as soon as possible after a reasonable period of time. So if that happens to fall on a date other than November date, then that's where the government code is looking for the election to be called.
In fact, it could be a June?
Correct.
So, see, you know, so it's a little bit fluid and dynamic. It's not such a black and white situation.
There's basically a default rule that's in the government code, which is what you were looking at before, and then you can opt out of that with this one option, which is specified in the government code, how it's going to operate.
And that one requires that the election be held within a certain amount of time?
Within a certain amount of time, correct.
Okay, well, that makes a difference.
John, any thoughts on this?
Yes, yes, I do have thoughts. It's a conundrum. I mean, it's a short term, yes, it works for right now, because we happen to be in this right point for the next election, but I definitely would not want to leave a legacy where the council would be in a position of having to pay for a special, I mean, the town would have to pay for a special election at some point in the future. That just seems, you know, we don't have a huge budget, and that's a big expense, and I would not want to leave that as a legacy. So it definitely gives me pause.
Is there any exceptions, wiggle room, and out for the future?
It is possible to rescind the ordinance, although whether it would make sense to rescind an ordinance in the middle of the process is obviously a question that a future council would have to face.
I understand this correctly, if we pass this, and it was, let's say, this time next year, we would have to call that election in June or November of 2014.
Depending on how the dates fell, it is possible that you would have to call an election in June.
And would that person serve, then we would have unbalanced terms, or it would just be through the rest of that?
Through the balance of the remaining term, or not, through the remaining term.
Through the remaining term.
Yeah. So the fact that this ends up being a two-year term after the election is just another coincidence. It could be longer.
Have you looked at the San Anselmo ordinance?
I haven't seen the ordinance. I know that they considered last night, and I saw a news report that they had done the first reading on it.
Yeah, I glanced at it, I really haven't studied it. I mean, and I'm not doubting your understanding of the law, because it's all new to me, so.
Karen.
Pamela Megs, 310 Cypress Drive. Just firsthand, hearing about this whole thing, it just hit me how obvious it is for that long of a term, and that's a gut reaction. So take that into consideration, and the people of Fairfax, and who they want to vote for, and it sounds a little complicated, but knowing our council, with the history, I think there's a way to work it out. And I could, and that's what I was starting to say just before this discussion, is there could be a potential cost if you create another special election. So I'm not sure what else to say, other than that, you got to let the people be involved, you know? Power to the people.
Pam, in a way, you're sort of, you hear the conundrum that we've just discovered, but you still weigh in on the fact that that may be a conundrum that we face down the road with all of its unpleasantness, $50,000 of unpleasantness, in fact, which is the cost-
How do you know it's a problem down the road?
Let's say we-
I mean, there's so much projection going on, that we're in the here and now, right now, dealing with this, and we keep projecting out of what could happen, and what candidate, and this and that. That's, to me, it's just right now.
I hear you. The concern, the concern that we have, however, is if we make this decision, we send council out, they write this thing into stone, and let's just play this out, that we were having this conversation next year, instead of this year, we would have to call a special election under this new ordinance, and we know that more or less in the range of $50,000 of a cost to have a special election. So while we're sitting up here, and I think what I'm hearing John say from Florida, is that, boy, we would be putting a wump on the budget on a future council.
Yeah, I'm not saying that's cool and groovy, but I still, for some reason, it doesn't feel like you all have your information, and that there's still more stuff coming in, that you haven't gathered all your facts, and who knows, maybe there is some law in the state that says you can't run four out of five, you know, on a five, I mean, we don't even know that, so that's why I'm still kind of like wondering, what are the rules?
Well, I got to tell you, the whole idea here in the government code, and I understand that it's recently been expanded, it used to be, I believe, 30 days, and now it's up to 60 days. So the legislature, in its wisdom, wants to have these matters resolved, or has local, wants local government. So we are in a very compressed timeframe.
I see, I hear. Anyway, I just don't think a three-year term should be appointed, period. Thank you.
Valerie?
Valerie Hood, 79, Dominga. I like the idea about democracy, that this is too long to a point. I mean, and I'm not, I have friends running, who would like to be appointed, so it has nothing to do with that for me. I just think it's really important, I think it's really important that we do find out what San Anselmo's ordinance is going to say. Perhaps they figured out some way, who knows? It is troubling, about four people at the same time. I really like the idea of the, that Chris was suggesting, that the top people go in line, boom, boom, boom. It seems really silly to have two separate ones. That just seems like a situation set up to make problems. So that's my, I mean, with no legal expertise whatsoever, that's just my layman's take. Thank you very much.
Barbara?
Barbara Kohler, 14 East Court. I do like the idea of democracy, and I think it makes sense, for such a long term, to go through the process of really having someone sit in for a while. I'm not sure necessarily that whoever is appointed for the short period would necessarily have a leg up, because somebody could have some missteps, which won't be forgotten, whereas if somebody's sitting here for four years as an incumbent, some of those missteps are countered with some of the better actions. So I think it can have pros and cons for who's ever appointed. I do have a question, though. In reading about San Anselmo's, the estimates of the cost of their special election was something like 68 to close to 80,000. It wasn't as finite, and I heard, I think at the last town council, that we thought between 45 and 50, and having lived in San Anselmo for about eight years, a number of years ago, I thought they have less population than we do. They have more, okay, so that, so are we, so I guess my concern is, I'm hoping that we can work some magic about not tying the council into future calling a special election, particularly with our fiscal situation, but I do have confidence that, as Valerie said and Pam said, that those rough edges can be worked out. But it really does seem like you need to have more information, because there are still questions about what would this ordinance look like, are we going to tie this town into calling a special election in the future, and the whole idea of who ends up with the two-year term, it's also possible that you would have nobody file for that.
Well, the situation here is, not only do we have our regular learned counsel, but the reason that we've asked Mr. Clark from the firm to come here is because he's an election expert, so we're sort of drilling down into even greater minutia of, you know, this area of the law.
Yeah, it sounds like you've got the right guy here, but there's still a lot of questions floating, so I generally support the idea of an open election after somebody's initially appointed. I think that makes sense for our town.
The root of all evil.
Ryan O'Neal. Sorry. If I had $50,000 to pay for the special election myself, I would. I didn't do that good at the fundraising, I guess to cover that. This is a hard situation, but it's very easy for me to navigate through this, but I'm not making the decision. Having experienced sitting where you're sitting, I understand the value of the homework that needs to be done. If you're getting a headache in the morning, it shows that you care, and that you want to get it right, but it also tells me you're thinking too much. Decisions that are made at a council level don't have to be hard, they don't have to be overthought. You have to be thoughtful, and you have to do your homework, but when it gets to levels of two years down the line, and four years down the line, or six years down the line, we've gone too far. I think it's very easy. In my opinion, we have a huge ally here in Fairfax now, and it's the transparency. You all have worked very hard to earn reputations. We are on camera now, so people are live with you in these meetings. The idea and concept of back-room deals are evaporating from the conspiracy theorists in our town. There is trust here in the town, and once we get the trust, it's important to keep it in order to move forward through the biggest obstacles that we have. People that are elected are elected to make difficult decisions. You all are professionals at making difficult decisions. You have eight very qualified candidates to choose from for an appointment. The remainder of my term is two years and eight months. I believe you're overthinking it when you think that's a long time. As you know from your service up here, a term goes by pretty quick. It goes by quick for me, because I don't wait the giant outcome of a term, I look at each individual thing that I deal with. To keep it simple, which is how I like to make my decisions, I do my homework, and then I look at what is the easiest solution and best for the town. If you can say to yourselves that you can make hard decisions, which you do every day, and if you can say to yourself, I'm transparent, and people trust me, then this is easy. You pick someone who you think is most qualified to represent me. You pick somebody that the town will trust, because you trust them. If you're able to find somebody who represented me most, if you're able to find someone of these eight people that would stand for the voters that voted for me, and not necessarily someone who you've worked with, or someone that you know, or someone that came in second, or all those other reasons, if you just look at the candidates, and do your homework, and find the one that's just as close to me as you can, that will represent the voters that voted for me, and I think that the public will trust you. And I think we're just thinking so big, and so far down, and who's going to have the edge at the next election? Just cut all that white noise out, and just cut to one of a group of very qualified applicants, give them a two-year and eight-month term, and let everything else fall by the wayside. People trust you. This is not that hard. People trust you, and I think that whatever you come to, like when we hired the town manager, we did a lot of homework, and we came to consensus. I think you're capable of doing that without overthinking this.
Let me suggest why I'm sort of, I'm listening very closely to what Larry is saying here, is that earlier today, we made a very tough decision on who to select for our very important farmer's market, in the realm of how our town operates, that's an important decision. Picking, selecting Garrett to be the town manager, a remarkably important decision. But there's a very different, there's a great difference between making a ministerial decision or making sort of a financial decision, as opposed to the very, even at our local level, this is elections, these are, this is why this country was founded, this is why people for many centuries have shed blood for this nation, not to overstate it too much, although it's a very, very important point. And so when we come down to the question of elections, as opposed to almost anything else that we do, it seems to me, what I'm hearing Larry talk about, and I'm bending in that direction, is this sense that the people should make their decisions in this most important and sacred- most important and sacred, um, part of their democracy. Um, and that's why I sort of don't know that I go with you on this. Yes, are these eight people qualified? Sure. Can they sit up here and be as good as any of us, um, and you? Sure. Um, but I don't think that that's the issue for me. The issue for me really is that sense of, of, of democracy, and how we work it here at our localist, most local level.
You know, be, before you speak for me, I'd like to speak for myself. Um, there's, there's a few questions that I have about adopting an ordinance that are not answered. I don't know if we'd have ranked choice election, which is what makes the most sense. Um, I think the idea of breaking out a special term, and having essentially two separate elections at the same time, could be very problematical, and really would not really get a representative result. Um, and I'm also concerned about locking the town into a special election every time a vacancy comes up. So, I, I just wanna put on the table, you know, my inclination is, yeah, let's, let, these are elective seats, they should be elected, but, you know, we've gotta kind of work through it, and make sure that what we're doing is responsible on a lot of different levels. So, um, I, um, I'm not decided, I just wanna kind of make that clear. My inclination is make, make it elected, but, you know, it's, it's, it only makes sense if it, if the process, or the statute allows it to make sense, and I'm not so sure it does.
I, I totally agree with you, and like I said, the transparency of elections is the best aspect, there's no doubt in my mind. But if it turns out that you're looking at a two-year, uh, elected position, and four-year elected positions, I think that that chaos could be, um, very difficult, and cause more problems. So, my approach wasn't that the elections are the wrong idea, 'cause I think that's absolutely the right idea. Um, but if you're making special concessions in order to get to that point, it's gonna cause more problems, and, and later on, then I think you just go back to the basics, is what it says they can do. Just keep in mind, people are, have your confidence, and your trust, and I think people are gonna understand, if it just comes down to making an appointment of four people that have already been elected, if they can come to some consensus, and it's not a broken vote, if you can come to, if four elected people in this town, who are trusted, can make, can come to consensus of who, that could, who could sit with them and do a good job, I think that the citizens of Fairfax would buy that. At the end of the day, I do agree that election is easily the best way to go, but if it's causing us more problems down the line, or setting precedent that's difficult, that's when I think, I just don't want you to think that you can't do this because of, people trust you, and I think that you can, you can do this if, if you, if that's the only option that you have.
Renee?
Hi, I'm Renee Goddard, two ninety-four Cascade Drive. Um, I wanted to just move slightly beyond the whole place we're in, in terms of election and appointment, and the differentiation, and what we're talking about, because I agree that, you know, our local democratic decision-making is what has put us on the map, and what makes me proud to go out in the county and, and represent our ideas, and, you know, get excited about things. But what I wanna understand is, do, do I understand correctly that moving forward, that could mean that at each, or at different times in the future, we would have four seats open for election at the same time?
No.
What's the most number we could have, where we would bring someone potentially new onto the council?
Three. Well, okay, you, you could really, in a sense, all five could resign, and then they would, okay, okay. But in, in the general thing, is what council was alerting us to, is that you would, if, if, if this was, again, next year, and we had a special election, and that person, it was, let's say it was in June or November, that person would only serve in, for the remainder of that term. So, we would, uh, intrinsically hold to our three, two, three, two, three, two. There would just be, um, during the interim of that term, that's what a special election would fill, much as like an appointment would fill.
Except for this fall, which would be four.
Okay, so it's only, we're talking about this fall?
No, this, this seat, the Ryan O'Neal seat, if you will, is, is a two-year, eight-month term.
I, I just wanted, the point I wanted to make, briefly, is that, um, I, I think one of the strengths that we have as organizations, and the organizations I've worked with, especially when we're talking about kids, and we're talking about systems, and committees, and councils, is that we have a multi-generational opportunity to have a mentor, and a newbie, and we actually learn from one another, we have continuity, and, you know, a place where we don't have to walk up and pretend like we know absolutely everything that's ever gone on, so we have council. And, um, I, it would determine my choices in moving forward, if I knew that there was gonna be this, you know, clean sweep of the, you know, and erasure of the slate, that we would have to then start over, virtually, without council. And I think, you know, some continuity in coming into positions, and moving toward doing your best is, requires that, um, seniority, if you will.
Well, you raise an interesting point, because in San Anselmo, in their election four years ago, um, they, they cleaned house, they took out three incumbents. Um, and so, there were just two, um, sitting council members when those three folks came up. Granted, one had been a former council member, one, you know, so there were, you know, some different facts in there, but you're, you're exactly correct. If we went forward with this ordinance, and council, you know, got back to us, we all agreed on it, yes, four new people could be joining Larry, uh, sometime in November, December, whatever it is, yeah.
Could I just, could I just ask, um, council a question? What, what happens if we don't appoint within sixty days?
Then you have to leave the seat vacant, and it's filled at the next election, which in this case would be November.
You certainly do dribble, you certainly do dribble out the information on a, but it's very interesting.
So, it would, in other words, if we don't appoint, then it stays vacant until the next election, correct?
That, yeah, if you don't appoint, then you're, you are required to call an election, it, it remains vacant until that election, which in this case would be November.
Okay. So, the, we would be within the time limits for calling an election in November? If, if, for some reason, we, we couldn't appoint, or didn't appoint, or whatever? Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
And then it would be a four-year term, or then it would be a two-year?
It, it's still, uh, fill out the remainder of the term, whatever it is. In this case, it's two years, but you fill out whatever the remainder of the term is. The point that was made, that you maintain your three, two, um, turnover, continues to be the case, this is not a process that will upset that.
And then, i- if, if there was no appointment, or we didn't make the appointment in time, excuse me, um, would, would that remainder term be a separate, called out separately on the ballot?
I, I still, I still think it would be, 'cause it's, it's a special election for that seat, as, as opposed to the regular election that you have for the other seats.
Okay. And, and we still don't really have the answer of whether we could do a unified ballot, and?
That's what we're gonna look at, I don't think that you can, but I don't wanna tell you for certain that you can't, without looking at it.
Okay.
Uh, my belief is that what you're gonna have is a special election for the remainder of the term, which is two years, and then you'll have your regular election for your three seats that come up normally for a four-year term.
Okay.
Um, there, there was some question, too, about, um, other dates, other than November, for elections, and the, the regular, the, the established dates for elections are second Tuesday of April, in each even-numbered year, first Tuesday after the first Monday in March of each odd-numbered year, first Tuesday after the first Monday in June of each year, and the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November of each year. So, there are four possibilities for when you would have to call that special election, depending on when the vacancy occurred. It, in this instance, because of when the vacancy occurred, it's that November date that was the closest one that had enough time before it.
And, but it, but there was like that hundred and forty-four day?
Hundred and fourteen days.
Hundred and fourteen days, had to be in between, so we, we couldn't say like, oh, good, well, we'll just wait till November, we would have to do it at the closest one that also allowed the hundred and fourteen days.
Yeah, so, it, it is possible that you could, depending on the year, depending on when the vacancy occurs, that you would have to call an election in April, March, or June, as opposed to November.
As a special election.
Correct.
Yeah.
Peter?
Yes, thank you. Peter Lax, two oh six Cascade Drive. I, I really do think that it is important to, uh, you know, have elections as soon as possible, because you have to think about, you know, you can't sort of reinterpret how the people voted. People voted for three candidates in two thousand nine to serve four-year terms, they voted for two candidates in two thousand eleven to serve four-year terms. Um, so I think it's important to maintain that as much as possible, and, um, I'm wondering if an ordinance could be drafted to just have the appointments last until the next regular election, to avoid the, the costs of a special election, but I think it is important to have the election, uh, as soon as possible. Um, the, recently, MMWD kind of went through this, Alex Furman was elected, he died, uh, they had a special election in two thousand ten, ordinarily, there were three seats up, there were four seats up in that election, uh, Armando Quintero was elected, uh, and then he had to run again two years later, to, uh, restore the integrity of those staggered seats. And, so, I think that model does work, and, and I think it is important to do that, and as, uh, nice as it would be to be appointed for a much longer term, and not have to deal with elections, I think it is important to maintain the integrity of the election process, and, uh, to have the regular elections as soon as possible. And I would, I think the balance is to, if, if it's legally feasible, to have an ordinance that allows for appointment until the next regularly scheduled election, that way the town avoids that extra cost. And, uh, in a way, this is kind of a good opportunity to, um, to look at this, and have an ordinance that will, um, address this in the future, 'cause it will come up at some time in the future. Uh, but I do appreciate the council's concern, too, for maintaining, uh, you know, the idea and the importance of allowing people to elect their officials, um, as quickly as possible, and I, I think that is the best course.
Thank you, Peter.
Thanks.
There any further public comment on this? Appears as if almost everybody in the room has spoken.
Counsel, I have a question.
Wait, let me just close the public meeting. Close the public meeting, we'll bring it back to council, Larry?
Sorry.
No, no, no.
Um, I, I don't think we can pass an ordinance that conflicts with the state code, do you?
Correct.
So, we're preempted on, on that, so, the only, you know, so in other words, we can't set it up to where it would just go to the next regular, regular election. So, we're lot, we're preempted by a higher authority, which is the state legislature. So, the one, excuse me, question that remains is whether, if we did it, whether you'd, you could have that rank choice, or whether it would be a broken-out, separate seat. My gut feeling would be, you know, I think the, the research is gonna come back, it's gonna be a separate seat. But I would like to have the answer before we commit to, to an ordinance, or not commit to an ordinance.
So, Garrett? Looking at the timing of all of this, and how we operate as a council, you have questions, you have research, we don't have to do anything on this, except to give direction to you, and then come back on the twenty-third, and enjoy the wisdom of it all.
That, that would be correct. What we would do, if, if, if I understand everything correctly, is, assuming the twenty-third is the meeting, we would come back to twenty-third, you would conduct your interviews, at that meeting, we would have the first reading of the ordinance available, at that time, then you could decide to adopt it, not take any action. In any case, if you did, either way, if you adopted the ordinance in the first reading, the second reading would occur on April third, after that second reading, then you would appoint council member. If you did nothing with the ordinance at the twenty-third, you still could wait to the third, April third, the regular meeting, to appoint the council member. So, you, you have that flexibility. The only thing from our end, as, as staff, is whether or not, because of just the changes and circumstances, would you want to reopen the application period for more applicants, which then creates a problem, depending on when you structure the meeting, 'cause there's not a whole lot of time to get the word out.
And we also, we also have a conflict on scheduling on the twenty-third, so...
Right, so that's like, the, for the next item, we have that kinda listed there, in terms of selecting a date, but...
But that also layers in the question of, if we just were seeking to fill the term until November, uh, would we wish to encourage applicant, I'm gonna make a leap here, say that the eight applicants who applied, are applicants who wanted to serve for two years and eight months? Um, would, if, part of this transparency is not to create incumbents, um, an incumbent, and so, do we open it up, and thereby solicit, uh, and put out there, as we have in one of our questions, um, you know, would somebody serve just, have an interest in just serving till November?
Could I? I wanna respond to that, because that, that has been one of your motifs, and I, and I understand it. But, um, you know, I, I don't, first of all, I don't think it's enforceable, uh, to have a candidate, uh, say they're not gonna run, I don't think it's legally enforceable, we found out in San Francisco with Mayor Lee, it's not enforceable. Um, the second thing, as far as transparency, this process we're doing is transparent. If, if we appoint, it's gonna be transparent, it's, I'm sure it's gonna be a very open and robust conversation. So, I, I, I don't think, I mean, I don't think political is a dirty word, I, I mean, it's a, we are going through a public process, that's, it is a political responsibility, what we're doing. It shouldn't be a political opportunity. So, I mean, that's the balance you're trying to strike. So, I just wanna say that, okay, because you've been bringing it up, and I understand it's a concern of yours, it's one I have less, um, I, I think the voters, with the timeframes that we're talking about, as far as if we did an appointment, the voters are gonna understand when somebody was appointed, and, and what that incumbency actually means. So, point, point, counterpoint.
Oh, no, I, I appreciate the, uh, the conversation, as always. My thinking on it, though, is that if you're running with the, well, look, we like those other council members, and, uh, it works to the advantage of if you're appointed by those other council members. On the other hand, if the people are disappointed with their current council, they would naturally take a dimmer view of, of our action in, in the selection. It just seems to me that, uh, for this brief period of time, uh, when we are going to go knee-deep into budget season, um, it seemed to me that for that brief period of time, I would feel much more comfortable bringing back, uh, if we're gonna go in this direction of the ordinance, as opposed to the other way. If we went the direction of the ordinance, I would seek to bring back a, a former, a former respected council member, um, to join us. But, reasonable minds can differ, and, you know, we, we just feel differently about this. It's not a game changer, and it's not, uh...
And I think it's off the topic of this particular item.
Yeah. So, with that, are we agreed that we've given, uh, direction to both council and our manager? And, uh, it's now time to move on to number two.
Can I make a comment? On the, on the last sentence that you said, about the, about the mayor, or the mayor that you're bringing back? He, he would be able to run, though, again, right?
Yeah, the, the way that I, I've expressed it is, yes, I know Larry's brought up the question of Mayor Lee broke a public pledge. Um, it's a city of seven hundred thousand fifty people, seven hundred fifty thousand people. You break a pledge in a town of seventy-five hundred people, five thousand adults, yeah, good luck. We depart from this, we should give John a chance, um, to comment. John, thoughts? Johnny Storm with us?
Well, I, I think, uh, that we, we don't have all the information, and I will be very interested on the twenty-third to hear what comes back. To an extent, I, you know, I'm, you know, California law seems to be pointing in a certain way, and, um, yeah, I think it's important to be publicly debated, and, and protect the interests of the town, and also the integrity of our public process. Um, I, I, I like Peter Lax's thoughts, that somebody could, um, you know, just be reaffirmed by the voted, voters, and were not. Whether that's legal or not, uh, you know, remains to be seen, it seems like it probably doesn't. Um, but on, on balance, yeah, we don't have all the information, but I, I, at this point, I find myself leaning towards, um, just having... But I, at this point, I find myself leaning towards just having a robust process here and knowing that we're going into the term that we're going into. And, you know, but the conversation's not over yet, so, till we get the rest of the information, I'm very interested to learn the thinking behind San Rafael's process and also exploring the answers to our questions that we've had tonight.
Okay. Thank you, John. Well, with that, we'll close number one and move on to number two, the adoption of the interview and appointment process for the selection of a candidate to be appointed to the vacancy. Garrett?
So, yes, so staff is actually proposing an interview and selection process for the council to select a replacement to fill the vacant position. We actually modeled after what the San Rafael City Council adopted with a couple of modifications. You'll note, attached to staff report actually is the process. There are some blanks, underlying things where we really need direction on. If the council chooses, agrees that this is the appropriate process. And if you do, then we really need amount of time candidates would have for their initial presentation, the number of initial questions and type of questions that should be addressed by the candidates in their initial presentation, a number of candidates each council member would select as a finalist, and then amount of time each finalist will be given to answer questions given by the councils. What we're recommending is that each council member have one or two questions, same questions that they would ask each of the candidates. Also attached to staff report is we attached a list of questions for consideration. Obviously, you could revise them, you could develop your own questions. We're just proposing that you at least include three to the council candidates so that in their presentation, at least you'll have some basis of comparison because they've addressed these three questions. And then for the finalists, again, we would say you would, each council member would have one or two questions. They would ask the same questions each candidate. Be up to the council member to develop those questions. We could work out the logistics of how that would work if there's a duplicative question. But again, with that, really, there's, and the other main issue is, it all has to happen within the next three weeks, by April 8th. Right now, we selected a date of March 23rd. We know there's at least one council candidate who cannot make that meeting, be out of town. But some of the other things is, we haven't heard back from all the candidates whether or not they can make that meeting. More importantly, we haven't heard back from the candidates of whether or not there are dates they absolutely cannot make. I think the difficulty for staff is that, really, you have four council member schedules and you have eight candidate schedules. Twelve people to try to find a date that works for everybody to happen in three weeks, it's a little tough. So what will matter is really, the most important thing is all four council members can make it. So right now, it's selected March 23rd. Again, we know one person cannot make it. So really, it's up to the councils to try to figure out what that date would be or stay the course. And again, really, another question is, well, I know we're going to come back with the ordinance, but again, it's the issue of, do you want to open up applications or just stay with the eight you have? That's just some staff, staff concerns. But other than that, we're just waiting to hear your direction on this.
Pam, your thoughts?
What was our window on applications before? How many, how many days did we give people to turn in applications? I know that was quick, but this would be even quicker.
Let's see, we did, the meeting was on the, I think we did to the end of the month. So that was probably close to three weeks, if I recall correctly.
And this would, if we opened up for more applicants with the possibility of this being, I mean, we aren't even going to know until the 23rd if we like the ordinance that comes to us on the 23rd.
Correct. Correct. So what would happen is if we stuck with the 23rd, then we would try to put a notice out tomorrow and try to get them all back by Thursday because we would need some time to get to those applications prior to that Saturday. So people would have probably not even a week, or about a week.
That sounds tight to me.
Tight.
My thoughts on some of the other things is, if we have eight applicants, if we gave generally about 10 minutes total to each person, maybe a two-minute presentation and eight minutes to answer questions, that's sort of my general sense on that particular blank. And then finalists, maybe another five or 10. I mean, I think if we have eight applicants and we give them 10, we're at 100 and...
Hour and a half.
We're at an hour and a half. And then if we take another, then we have to deliberate, then we take another half-hour?
Hour.
Hour?
Yeah. That sounds...
Nine to 12?
Other than that, I think, and my only other question was, are you asking us to sort of, each council member gets to ask two questions that have to be the same two questions? Or, I mean, I know that there's sort of a thing on here that says the applicants won't know what the questions are beforehand, and then there's this lovely list in our public packet of what the questions are suggested.
Yes.
Just in case you didn't notice that.
So they weren't supposed to see those questions?
Okay.
That's correct. Under San Rafael model, each applicant would have a certain amount of time to make presentations. In San Rafael, the council did not ask any questions for the first presentation. They just heard the presentation. Each one of them had to answer three or four fixed questions ahead of time, and then that's what they had. And I think they had six minutes. They had, of course, they had, I think, 12 or 14 candidates, so they had, they had six minutes, initial presentations, no questions. And then what happened is then the council decided on finalists. Each council member picked two. I think if you were finalists, if you were on that list, then you became a finalist. Then the finalists were given, I think, two minutes to answer one question from each council member. Each council member actually had the same question that they asked of the candidate. And that was how their process was laid out, and that's in essence how we have this somewhat laid out.
So do we have a closed session before that, that we determine which questions we're asking? Or how do we know which, that we're not asking the same question as another council member?
Well, logistically, how that would have to work is, what we would recommend is, you can, as council members, just send your questions that you're going to ask for the finalists to us. We can review it and then let you know if there's a conflict. And what we would recommend is that each council member have some backup questions. So if your question gets asked, you have a backup question to ask.
Garrett, let me ask you, if we can simplify a difficult situation. I don't like the gotcha approach here. Why don't we select a series of questions, let people think about it for a couple of weeks, so that when they come to us, they have thoughtful and well-reasoned conversation with us? And, you know, any of these questions, you know, are pretty darn good. Three goals, you know, skip the second one. What program budget areas would you advocate? I mean, these are, you know, thoughtful, good, solid questions that would, I think, give anybody a chance to evaluate an applicant for the seat.
I don't think we give them the opportunity to be in the hot seat that we are so often in, where you have to think of the answer to a question.
Actually, I...
I think it's a good idea. I'm, there's no reason to torture our appointees.
So I think, Mr. Vassmeyer, I think for San Rafael, they did appoint, I think they might have had a council subcommittee of two that came up with the council questions.
I suspect we could probably come up with them in the next 10 minutes. And you've presented a very good list, and, you know, I'm sure we could select four of these from the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of them, particularly since the second one seems to be coming out. So four out of six.
Yeah, I, I think the process, the interview process, I think, is important. I mean, whether they have notice of the questions beforehand is not a big issue for me. And, I mean, we could, we could try to work it, we could try to work the questions out now. We could try to, we could try to work the questions out now, if that's what everybody wants to do.
Let's just take a moment here. You know, the bottom three are kind...
Don't ask John.
Yeah, that's a good idea. John, please weigh in here. John, can you follow us on...
I wish I could say that I've got a copy of the questions that are sitting in front of you.
Oh, not a problem. Let me read them out and, as we go. So the first one is, cite three top goals for the council and your reasons for considering them high priority.
That's a good question.
That's a very good question. We're going to skip the second one, following the colloquy between Larry and myself regarding running for the position. What, the third question was, what program budget areas would you advocate be increased? And how would you fund these increases? Interesting. Number four, why are you interested in serving on the council? Five, how would the council be a better council with you on it? Six, what have you done to prepare yourself for taking over this role? It's a good question. And the final question, please give us more detail on what your vision is for the town of Fairfax. I certainly think the first question and the second to last question, what have you done to prepare yourself for taking over this role, would be particularly apt in light of the position.
And the question of why you're interested in serving was on the application. We've gotten a written response to that, at least.
And I think question one, top three goals for the council...
Yeah.
Is a good question.
So we all three have consensus on number one and the, what have you done to prepare yourself for taking over this role? Do we want to select one more or two more?
I think they're, these are all pretty good questions. Frankly, I like the idea of giving these questions to, you know, I mean, somebody's basically filling out an application. I mean, it's kind of interesting, you know, when somebody gets a question that they don't, they aren't prepared for it, to see what they say. But that could well be served by the second round, you know, the semifinalists answering questions at that point. I think it's a good idea to, you know, kind of even the playing field with a wide range of questions, and I'm pretty happy with those, to be honest. With the, why, you know, what your vision is, which I think we put on all our boards and commissions also.
So do we want to go with three or four questions?
Let's go with four.
And which...
Should we go with three? Is that the question right now? Should we go for...
Three or four.
It seems that we're going to go with four different questions. People want to suggest two others?
I think that, one of the questions John asked, which is one that I had thought of, was regarding the boards and commissions that we all serve on too, and that, maybe that's something that's more appropriate for the finalist.
I have a feeling that the boards and commissions are going to be very scaled down for anybody that takes over this role. They're going to be, as they say, you know, really sucking air to come up to speed and to say, hey, by the way, you're now on X committee also, is, boy, I think some of the, some of us will be sitting in as alternates along with them. But I think, I'd be hesitant to, you know, really impose that and throw them into the deep section of the pool.
Isn't that exactly what all of us have done, though?
You know, I mean, I hate to see the whole thing completely scripted ahead of time. I mean, I would just stay with the generic question. Top three, top three goals for the council. I actually like what program budget areas would you advocate be increased and how to do it, and the vision of Fairfax.
What about the, what have you done to prepare yourself?
To me, that's going to be apparent in the applications when we go through what their qualifications are.
Okay. So we like the first question, three goals, program budget areas would you advocate? How would you fund them? And more detail on vision.
Sure.
You like those three? There you go, Garrett. Those are your three questions for all of the applicants.
And then we can save our zingers for the finalist round?
Sure, sure.
And each, each council member have a question, or...
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Sure. I mean, I think it should be somewhat fluid. I don't think it should be completely scripted ahead of time because there's, people are going to say things, we're going to want to respond to them, so why get locked into this, like, formal structure? You know, I think it's going to be better for everybody that it's not so narrowly construed. We'll just, I think we, we'll run a pretty good ship here. We have, so... I'm mixing my metaphors. Can you run a ship? I don't know.
I don't know.
Into the ground.
Into the ground.
Do we have any public, public comment on number two, on this process?
Having been on, or still on, the sanitary board, we did an appointment, and it's kind of interesting, some of what you're talking about is the same process. Each board member has a kind of few questions, and we discussed it, so we weren't asking the same question beforehand. But the way we interviewed our candidates was in the room individually. And then they left, so they couldn't overhear that kind of thing. I don't know if you talked about that or not.
That's in here.
And I think we had a point system.
That's in here.
Okay. Never mind. Thank you.
Any other, any other public comment on this aspect, number two? If not, Barbara?
Do we do? We can do...
I don't know if this is appropriate, but I absolutely cannot make the 23rd. My mother's in hospice, I'm going to see her, and I cannot change my plans. So I would change every other plan that I have, but I can't not see my mom. So I cleared my calendar for any other date, and I would do so. Just that weekend is not good for me. But I think the process sounds pretty fair, and I like the way you have the people coming in individually and the other candidates not able to hear what they're saying. It also helps because people can be focused rather than listening to other people and maybe getting ideas. Also, probably it might be confusing if you're hearing somebody else's ideas and mixing them up. So it sounds good to me.
Quick question. Is there open time, and is it appropriate to have people come and speak for candidates, or how does that work?
Garrett?
So, yeah, you would have open mic, or not open mic, but public comment, sorry.
Wait a minute. Can I ask you a question? Public comment after each applicant speaks or after the collection?
No, it's adjourned meeting, so, well, actually, it's a rec, well, actually, this is a, this isn't a adjourned meeting, it's a special meeting.
23rd?
23rd. It's a special meeting. So would they have public comment?
Well, there would still be public comment on the, item on the agenda for the selection of the replacement council member. So there would be an opportunity for people to, I think the question is, could people come in and express their support for one of the candidates? And that would be possible.
Can you just tell me whether it would have to be after each individual speaker, or would it be at the end of this first round and then second round?
I think you could consolidate it at one point, so it could be at the end of the first round. I don't think you have to.
Sure.
It's going to be up to the council to determine, you know, how they want to run the process, but you could have a process where the comment would all be consolidated after all the candidates speak.
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So are we on the second item yet, or are we...
We are completing the second item.
So what about the scheduling issue and getting that squared away? I mean, can we do, it doesn't sound like it's a great idea to do two separate heats on different days.
No. I don't see how we could do it. I mean, if one, two, or more candidates were not available, they all have to be there because if you go to the second round with them, they have to be there.
So what about alternative dates? Can anybody come the following Monday?
What is the 23rd?
That'll be the 25th.
That's the 25th.
The only thing I would say is for members of our tribe, that is Passover.
Not a great day. It's Passover that evening?
Passover on the 26th, I'm assuming the Seder is on the 25th. Can never speak to the wisdom of my calendar because it's pre-printed, but I...
I don't know.
I don't know.
What, are you...
I think it pretty much...
Wait, wait, wait.
You know about the Passover schedule?
I'm asking her if she's leaving that morning, if we could potentially do Friday night before...
No, actually, I'm leaving about 6 o'clock in the morning of Friday, and I'm coming back Sunday morning. So I, I'm not around.
Okay.
Jewish and Islamic...
Does anybody have, can we, can we check?
It is, but the way they're noting it, Passover.
Starts which day?
The 25th.
Passover starts at Sunday.
On which day?
That is the 25th.
It is the 25th, okay. So we would want to do it maybe the next day.
Ideally, for me, I have my daughter with me on Mondays and Tuesdays, but she's home right now, suffering, so I don't want to be putting too much. I only get her for four days a week.
Do you want to do it on the 28th?
I have another meeting, but I could move it.
Let's do it on the 28th.
Yeah. And I'm...
We need five days for the second reading.
Let's, John, John wants to...
Yeah. I apologize. I can't hear on the phone what people are saying in the immediate time, but, so I hear that delayed, but I am coming back into town. I'm available the 20th. but, so I hear that delayed, but I am coming back into town, I'm available the 20th. I cannot make the 27th, or the 28th. But that Thursday night before Barbara is leaving town, for instance, you know, I'll be as flexible as I can be.
I have CDBG that Thursday, but I could miss that, if need be.
The 28th is a possibility, or is that the five day?
Actually, 28th is a possibility. 29th would be the five days prior to the second reading.
And it's Good Friday.
21st?
We still have, we still have the, well, we still, we still have to deal with the ordinance, but...
23rd works here.
We would be coming back, we would be advancing the meeting to the 21st, right?
Correct. So, we would have everything that we normally have on the 23rd, we have on the 21st. 21st, with the exception of, if you thought you wanted more applications, that gets more complicated. But if we don't, that's...
Well, and I think, if we're also changing this date for one applicant, does this mean we change the date for any of the eight applicants who cannot make the 21st?
23rd.
That'd be correct. We don't know at this point if everyone can make it on the 21st. I think everyone here, it sounds like, they can make it on 21st, but that's not everyone who applied.
Right. Can we at least confirm that everyone who's here can make it on the 21st, who are applicants?
Hi.
Okay, yeah.
Well, why don't you get back to us on that, Garrett, and then we can...
We need to set it now, I think.
Get back to you as in, check with the applicants?
Yeah.
Okay. If that date doesn't work, then what, are we back to the...
28?
20, 23?
28th doesn't work for John.
Yeah, so we need, I guess for us staff, it's good to have a backup date, or just select a date and go with it.
Sure.
What's the 29th?
29th doesn't work on the ordinance. If you wanted to have five days...
What about, what about the following Saturday?
That's too close on the ordinance.
The ordinance would be tight. If you wanted to have the meeting on the 23rd to discuss the ordinance, and to have the interviews on the 30th, you could do that. Garrett?
We're right now checking to see if you could do it on the 29th, other than it is Good Friday.
I can't do the 30th.
Which is the Saturday.
Oh, you couldn't do the 30th, I don't think. 29th you can do.
Which is Good Friday.
29th would be the last day, if you're going to adopt the ordinance.
We could always meet at 9:00 AM on the 23rd to discuss the ordinance, without just, without going forward with interviews. And then we could clarify this matter, and meet at another time, once we've clarified it, one way or the other, to get into the interviews at a more distant time. Those two do not have to be on the same day.
That's correct. They don't have to be on the same day. Although, what happens is, your window's even shorter for when you want to conduct the interviews. I mean, theoretically, could you interview on April 3rd? You could. You could interview after April 3rd, you just need to do it by April 8th.
Interesting point, just do it early in the morning, or, I mean, earlier...
Isn't less meetings better than more meetings?
Fewer.
Just a thought.
Which is that they're, they're not meeting, just at 5:00 AM? Do you want, do I want to...
I can't meet at 5:00 PM on a, I have to, I can do six.
Garrett, if we did it on the 3rd of April, in conjunction with our town council meeting on a day, on that date, you would effectively have to clear the agenda of anything but the most significant item, or else we would have to go into a special meeting, or an adjourned meeting sometime after that, later in the week, that weekend, something like that.
I mean, we could do that, with the possibility of the council would consider a special meeting later in April for things that maybe couldn't wait till May?
Sure. It's not my call, but yes.
Wait, are we assuming that we're going to try for the 21st for, before, like, that's, we're just looking for a secondary date, right? We're going to try, we're going to shoot for the 21st.
Correct.
And the, and the backup date would be...
April 3rd.
Okay. So, 21st would be the, first would be the ordinance and the interviews.
Yes.
And if that didn't work, 21st could be the ordinance, not the interviews. Interviews can happen on the 3rd.
You could do that. Yeah.
Okay.
You guys still hoping, I mean, public...
For you...
Okay, so, I, I just have a very fundamental question about whether or not we are planning or foreseeing repeating this entire process again in the near future, and what the implications of that are with respect to the process that we're about to undertake right now.
So, I think almost everyone in the room already knows. I am planning on resigning from this council. My move date is in June, which will leave a couple of months left on the end of my term. Ideally, what we figure out here, we will not have to repeat all of it, in order to appoint someone to fill my seat. But, as is the case with Ryan, once my seat is, once I vacate my seat, I no longer have a say in the matter. So, I'm assuming that what, the decisions that we make would be ones that would carry over for another appointment in another couple of months.
Right. But the ramifications of them, and the datings would still flow to the November election, so it's...
Right, right.
My seat is up in November, so my seat is somewhat less complicated. I have, I have served three and a half years.
Right.
And maybe just a little more clarification. So, for initial presentations, we said 10 minutes? 10 minutes, okay. 10 minutes, and I got the fixed questions. Is council anticipating the initial presentation, that you would ask follow-up questions, or no questions?
During, during the initial presentation?
Right, after the initial presentation. Are you thinking you would ask questions beyond just the three we gave them?
I think, you know, just in listening to people, it's going to, it's going to maybe stimulate a little bit of conversation.
Okay.
Or follow-up. I mean, I would kind of shorten it, I would give them seven minutes to make the presentation, three minutes for follow-up questions. And not to make it unduly complicated, you could also give people option, do you want five minutes or seven minutes? I wouldn't necessarily give them 10 minutes, because for presentation...
By presentation, you mean like a mon, I mean, my thought was like a two-minute...
Oh, okay.
Monologue, and then more time for questions, to answer the questions. Unless they're, I mean, they know what the questions are, maybe they're answering questions in that, and then we're answering.
So, you were just allocating 10 minutes...
10, 10 minutes, and it's up to them to save some time for question and answers.
Okay, that, that's...
Okay. 10 minutes, three questions, got that. And then, for your finalists, did you decide that, for narrowing down the choices, to just each council member selecting two, or three?
What did they do in San Rafael?
They did two. And how that works is, whoever's on individual lists, they're the ones that go on. I mean, theoretically, under this model, you would, if you all picked somebody different, you'd have all eight as finalists. But on the plus, on the other side, there's a possibility you only have two finalists, if you all pick the same people.
Then I guess you're sort of driving us toward the three, aren't you?
Oh, well, actually, either way is fine. I almost was thinking two, I guess.
Yeah, no, it sounds, it sounds like two is a better, better way to go.
And for working Senate, San Rafael?
And what has happened in other situations, in the case that we have four council members here? What happens if it, the final deliberation and vote is a two, two vote?
If you have four council members, and you have a two, two vote, then that's no decision, which means the office doesn't get filled. And if the office doesn't get filled by the 60 days, then it automatically goes over to election, with the office remaining vacant until the election.
The election, the November election.
That's correct, in this case.
And then, as additional clarification, for the finalist interviews, the amount of time was five minutes, or what? I'm, sorry, I missed that.
For their presentation?
Well, actually, for the finalist interviews, the idea was, council would just ask them questions. And actually, it doesn't have to be set questions, I suppose you could ask whatever questions you like, but it'd be good just for this to just represent what you're thinking.
As two people?
Theoretically, it could be two people, it could be more, assuming that the policy is, whoever you name as your finalist, automatically becomes a finalist. So, if only one person has a person's name, they would still be a finalist.
If you had five finalists, you'd have more...
So, I'd say, five minutes.
Five minutes, and then you would just ask whatever questions you would like. I'm not going to put in, you'll ask the same question of every candidate.
Okay.
I mean, could I, could I quibble a little more, and say, five minutes if we have more than three candidates?
Yes.
10 if we have less than three.
Or to be entirely equitable, if, if we give X to Y, why don't we give A to B? Just as long as we're equal on the amount of time we give to both, if it's both.
That's good.
Just be fair.
Do we give X to Y?
You know what they say about consistency?
The hobgoblin of small minds.
Got you.
John, do you have anything else you'd like, um, John, do you have anything? Did you would like to share with us on number two?
I think, yeah, the follow-up questions, we don't know how many finalists there'll be, and I think that's fine, I think we can ask some questions, and, you know, at that point, we'll have a pretty good idea of what we want to know from these candidates, and I think that will be appropriate.
Well, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn in the memory of Nancy Campbell-Reed and Robert Louis O'Neill.
I will move that, actually.
Thank you, John. Michelle, will you note that John moved that? Thank you. We're done.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John, see you soon.
Thank you, Robert.